Bienvenidos a todos, es el 25 de noviembre y esta es nuestra reunión regular del Consejo de la ciudad de Rhinebeck. ¿Podrían sentarse?
Para el bien de Estados Unidos, América, y para la República en la que se está estando, una nación, un Dios, individual, libertad, justicia.
Quiero una motion para aprobar los minutos de nuestra reunión regular de octubre 28 y nuestra reunión especial de noviembre. ¿Tienen una motion? Gracias, Ellen. ¿Tienen un segundo? Gracias, Chauncey. ¿Hay algún debate? ¿Algunos comentarios? ¿Todos en favor? Sí. ¿Alguien en contra? Aprobado.
And I'm like, what are they talking about? I'm looking now at this current proposal, which eliminates screening requirements, a proposal I had in time. And I'm saying, what are you talking about? And then it hit me. They're talking about the policies found in the DEC report referred to as inventory of resources. Now, in the final version of the DEC report, even in the draft version, they say there are inventory of resources that need to be protected. And two of those resources are scenic roads and scenic areas of statewide significance. And you know that, I'm sure you know, but for the audience here, in the town of Rhinebeck, we have 15 town designated scenic roads. Six of those roads have been designated by the state of scenic roads. We also have what is known as the scenic area of statewide significance. And in 29 subunits stretching from Troy, New York down to Hyde Park, there are nine estate districts right here in the town of Rhinebeck. And so if we have these protections, these designated sites, and these sites are listed in the town's LWRP, policy 23A and 23AB and C, do we really need this wording? And then I said, wait a second. Because, and I'm sorry, I don't have a larger visual. But when you look at the town of Rhinebeck here, you're looking over here from the Hudson River on our west hallway over here to the east, you would say, yeah, these policies protect us all. But no, they don't. The LWRP policies, they only affect All the area here on the western side. That's where our scenic roads are. That's where the scenic area of statewide significance, the nine estates are located.
There are scenic roads all over the town, not just the city.
The majority of them are located over here. And I went through the list there.
House Road, White School House Road, Wurthburg Road.
Okay, but the majority of them are located over here, but primarily scenic areas of statewide significance. However, if you look to the west, I mean to the east, you don't have any of those protections. So if this law goes into effect, this area here might be protected by current policies. But this area out here, if you go to the east, are not going to have these protections. And what I fear is, and what I've heard from different companies, is that you could have companies coming in and offering lucrative deals to have solar, community solar arrays, whatever you want to call them, built throughout this area. Now, for those of you who are in favor of renewable sources of energy, you might say, great, we're doing something finally. Some of these curmudgeons will turn around and say, well, you can't do anything about it, you can't fight city law. And some people might say, I don't like it, and I'm annoyed. And they might meet with other people. And they might turn around and say, I want to find out how this all needs to pass. And they're going to start foiling reports. And they're going to read my reports and other reports. And then they might find a super zealous attorney who's going to do some research. And before you know it, the town could be hit with another article 78 lawsuit. So what do we want? Do we want lawsuits at the same time having great renewable sources of energy? Even Sina Hudson says, stay away from these issues. So what I'm asking is, let's hold off on this law. Let's have a moratorium. Let's get the community involved in workshops and forums. Sina Hudson has a number of ways that the town and community can meet these goals without causing any problems resulting in animosity between neighbors in lawsuits. We know we have the lawsuit over from Woodbury Road. And in our road, we have neighbors who are not even talking to each other anymore because of this. Is that what we want? But Sina Hudson says there are ways, but the community has to work together. And that's why I tonight am asking this board, for if you're here to speak about the law, say, let's meet in the middle. Let's get the community involved. It wouldn't be an easy job. We would require people to come out and work. And we can get Sina Hudson. We can get Jeff Irish over there and other people in on this and find ways to make this work. Thank you.
I would like to remind people that, hold on Susan, I'm going to take the... Michael, are you coming up?
Yep.
Michael's next. Bob, thank you. I know Bob's gone for a long time. I'd like for people to be mindful of the time. Usually we limit public comment to three or four minutes.
I got a few short answers. I thank you very much.
I'm trying to let people speak.
So...
You're addressing the board.
Bob is right about everything he said about the LWRP, about scenic roadways, all that stuff. And all of that would have come into play when I built the buildings that the Solar Corps and they were approved. So what we're really talking about here is changing the color of approved buildings in the very district he's talking about. My comments to you last time...
The color of the roof.
The color of the roof. It goes from, currently my roofs are red, green, green, thank you. I'm not doing it like that. And now they will be black with some marks where the panels intersect. And the question that was brought up in the law was whether that requires screening.
Or obscuring.
Or obscuring.
Because we don't even have to screen a roof.
It's impossible to screen roofs. And the original law was unclear about this problem. I would suppose the people that you're hearing the most negative comments from happen to live right across the street from the two large buildings that I built. They can't stop, couldn't stop construction of buildings. It was attempted. But they passed the muster of whether they were legal buildings. So my perspective is that the law was being used as it was written to try and obscure those buildings from sight, the screening requirement. And we went through a long process, very expensive process for me, of trying to determine whether you can screen a roof and whether it's feasible to do it. And whether that was ever really intended by the law. Now, we've heard a lot of people who were involved with the writing of the law say, oh, we didn't really mean it to mean roofs.
We are the legislators, we wrote the law.
Right.
These are the people who are involved in writing the law.
Right, well, there was a large committee of folks involved that weren't just here. But yes, the law was not intended to force people to screen roofs. Because it's not, there's no common sense in asking someone to screen a roof. What if the building is on a hill? What are you going to put up 200-foot tall, 500-foot tall redwoods to screen a roof that's up on a hill? You can't screen roofs. So that's what all this is about. It's all about, can I change the color of the roofs of existing buildings and provide solar power to 50 homes? Now, there's been, not in this meeting tonight, but in other meetings, I've been cast as having, you know, financial interest in this? Yes, I do. The money I'm spending on the solar, I could earn a lot more from that money in other places. I really could. My bias is my kids. And your kids. This is a resource we have to use. Roof mounted solar is the low-hanging fruit of green power. It is really simple. You change the color of roof and you provide enough electricity for the whole house. If your house doesn't sit in the sun, I'll make the electricity for it. Or someone like me, who has large buildings and can change the color of the roof. It's that simple. The buildings are in historicistic, but they're approved. They're right across the street from some neighbor's houses, they don't like it. I'm sorry. I can't make all my plans based on what my neighbors want to see. Nor should I have to. But they do comply with zoning requirements for our pleasure buildings. And what I'm asking to do is to change the color of the roof and provide power for 50 homes. Thank you.
Who else would like to? Does anybody else want to speak?
Good evening. My name is Susan Agusa, I'm a resident of Rhinebeck, and I live on Hill Road. I support renewable energy, reducing fossil fuel emissions, and I do protect, reprotecting the community's natural resources in the beauty of the region. And I support transparency by our local town board in making, amending, and enforcing laws. For the past several months, the town of Rhinebeck has been working on changes to the solar code related to the screening of commercial solar plants. In March 2019, the ZBA concluded that the intent of the town's solar energy system law to require screening for solar power plants is reasonable and appropriate to the type of installation, round building or roof-mounted solar arrays, as well as for the character of the surrounding district. The town code also requires screening of commercial uses in residential districts in general with the preferred method of screening by vegetation. The zoning review group was formed in March to discuss potential zoning code updates and including required changes to the solar code relating to screening of commercial solar plants. Shortly thereafter, the zoning review group convened and considered three options, choices for the town. One, doing nothing and leaving the zoning code as it is written currently. Two, removing all requirements for screening of commercial solar plants. Three, clarifying the zoning code to provide guidance for obscuring commercial solar plants. Having attended the ZRC meetings, following the comments and suggestions by the committee, recommendations were presented to the zoning revision committee by the town planner at the June 3 meeting. And the committee approved those recommendations found in number eight solar farm law, roof-mounted screening. These recommendations stated screening would be required, any amendment to the code would include specific screening, and that these recommendations would be sent to the town board where the board members would discuss at a June 10 meeting. I attended the June 10 meeting and it was announced that the board had met with the town attorney prior to the meeting and discussed the matter. The board was directed by the town attorney to draw up a draft proposal to be presented at a July meeting. No further discussion of the matter, more opportunity for the public to comment and spend it. The town board was supposed to deal with this next version of the draft proposal in July, but the town attorney went on vacation and added the proposal to the agenda. And adding the proposal to the agenda was postponed to August. And this is where, before my eyes, the process for creating a proposal to amend solar law 12547 went dark and off the rails. It was at the August board meeting I noticed the first change in the proposal that did not conform to the previous proposal. There were no public comments allowed, but the board accepted the proposal and moved it to the September meeting with public comments. In the September meeting, there were still screening requirements in the proposal and public comments were allowed. At the October meeting, rather than address the proposal, the town board had grave concerns about the proposal because of a letter received by Sina Hudson. No public comments were taken. A special town board meeting was instantly called for Friday, November 15 at 3:00 PM to discuss the new proposal. Now, this new proposal eliminates all screening. I'm confused. I am asking the town...
Let me try and clarify something.
Wait, Chauncey, it's a public hearing, let her finish and then we...
Oh, all right.
I am asking the town board on Board 4 AM on ratifying the proposal before us this evening. And I support participation for laying the foundation for communities in which residents share the task of maintaining and improving the places where they live. The town residents, Rhinebeck town residents, do not have all the information about how and why this new proposal was created. And the information that has been put out by the town is not totally accurate. I am advocating for a bottom-up approach to ensure that people living in our town are able to shape and love where they live. Invite the community to participate in the workshop with enough notice at a reasonable time. And allow the residents of Rhinebeck to participate with the capability of providing something for everybody and the responsibilities of preserving the historic, natural, and scenic beauty of our community. Thank you.
It's the November 15 meeting, not when we just took the law, accepted it on the...
Yes.
There were no deliberations at that meeting, I don't think, on the 15th. We just accepted the then-proposal.
We have to have a public meeting in order to lay a law before us. Who want to, Dave, and then Mike.
My name is Mike Fraser. My wife and I are applaud this board for being serious as you are about supporting the idea and applications of the law that will permit the development of alternate sources of energy. We think that's very important. The reason I'm here tonight actually is that my wife and I are both serious investors and we own a good number of panels that Sun Common has in a field next to a school over in Kingston. And we received an email from Sun Common encouraging us to come here this evening to argue in favor of the proposed amendment to this law. They're actually not going to be too happy about what I have to say. As you all know, since you appointed me recently to serve as deputy town historian, I took a look at what Sun Common sent me. And first of all, was a little surprised at the language because the town itself, or maybe it was simply your town planning board sponsored the workshop that I attended on October 10 that was led by Charles Burnmount, which talked about the need, very specifically in looking at historic sites, to be talking not about historic buildings on those sites. And the property in question here is almost a thousand-acre site. What Charles Burnmount's point was is that we need to be looking not at buildings, not historic buildings, but at historic properties. I did a, I'm also the archivist for the Rhinebeck Historical Society and did a program at the Morton Library on, actually the same date that Sina Hudson sent out this October 25 letter. That evening, I spoke for about an hour about the history of Ellersley. Ellersley is the oldest piece of property in Oregon Dutchess County for which there is a reported deed. Pummer Hollow LLC actually is the majority of that property. The issue that we just, that we're hearing about, is right here, the East Gate. I spoke about the East Gate. That was the access to Ellersley that had been designed by William Kelly, maintained by Levi Morton. Stayed there, it's still there to this day. Double set of trees on each side of that access road. I'm not going to repeat what I did in the presentation because I know we're concerned about time here. But my point, actually what I will do is simply refer to the last sentence of that October 25 email that you have received from Sina Hudson. I assume all of you have, you've read it. The last sentence says, we are recommending against adoption of this proposed law. That's Sina Hudson's position.
Whoa, wait a minute, Mike. What are you looking at?
Have you seen this? Look at the last page.
Mike, they are against a copy of the law that requires screening.
They're against rooftop solar roof-mounted systems.
They do not...
That's correct.
They do not want us to mandate screening or obscuring for rooftop solar. The law that they are objecting to was the previous draft.
No, no. No, you're not reading correctly. They are recommending against what you're looking at this evening and they list their arguments on the previous page.
We have Sina Hudson here, so we'll let them speak to it.
Well, I will stand corrected if I'm...
Michael, I think you're misreading.
I think not, Chauncey. I think what they are concerned about is that there is already language in existing regulations. And they don't get to that until towards the very end of their letter.
Given the codes, already existing site plans, special use permit, and other regulations to protect such resources, we do not believe there's a further need to require default screening or obscuring, which this proposal before us doesn't. Those circumstances continue to be...
Well, I won't interpret what I recognize as a representative...
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mike.
We'll hear what they have to say. You know, my bottom line is that while I think it's critical that the town maintains its position and do everything in its power to support alternate sources of energy, I also think that it's important to look at the impact on historic properties of what is being legislated here.
Which this does.
Amen. Which...
Once before.
Yeah, except it talks about buildings instead of properties. Why does it do that?
Mike, what we're talking about is the need to screen a rooftop-mounted solar array. The buildings exist. Are you against rooftop solar?
I am not opposed to rooftop solar, Elizabeth.
So what this law is...
But what I'm asking you to do is to consider not just one property, not just one building. Because there's only one building left on that property from the original, there's a water tower. That's it. This is, you know, that specific provision is almost irrelevant.
I don't understand what you're saying, I'm sorry.
I've already taken more than enough of your time.
Michael, excuse me, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So Levi Morton built the largest barn building in New York State during a time when you're talking about this property being a spectacular historic site, right on the River of Ushet.
Yep.
And I wonder if you would have supported the building of that building at that time?
Absolutely.
I think you're being...
Thank you. Eric, please keep it to under five minutes. I'm begging you. We have three now. Three minutes is our...
Well, my main concern is that because this law was sort of pushed through quickly.
Since March.
No, not this new revision of the law. Solar law in general was pushed through quickly without much public review.
Comment was made very secondary.
Excuse me, I wasn't interrupting you. Because of that, they were pursued for conflict of interest. It looked like it was being written for a particular vendor and...
That is not true, and I really resent it. And you know all of us better than that.
I said, it looked as if. Doesn't the ethical code require that there be no appearance of conflict of interest? Does it not say that?
Don't respond, Chauncey.
I'm sorry, but I'm just responding to you now. There was an appearance of a conflict of interest. It was a lawsuit before because of it. There was an appeal of that lawsuit. As far as I know, that's still pending. But now it looks like you're doubling down and instead of avoiding it...
Doubling down on solar, dirty community solar.
I don't know. I'm talking about doubling down on a conflict of interest.
You know what?
That's what I understood you were saying, and I really...
Doubling down on the appearance of a conflict of interest.
What's the conflict of interest?
That members of the planning board, members of the town, members of the village were working with the solar vendor in order to write the law. And now it looks like it's being amended because a particular project is desired for that one being upheld. And now it's being amended.
Do you really believe that?
Pardon?
Do you really believe that?
I say, there was an appearance of it.
I don't think we should, I think we...
There is an appearance of it. And if there's not, you have to change the word appearance. You have to change the whole meaning of it for it to say it's not...
Thank you, thank you.
My three minutes are up now?
You can keep speaking.
Okay, thank you. Specifically, Michael said that his building was approved. The buildings all approved. It was approved as a farm building. It was not approved as an armature for a solar power plant. And also the law conflates the residential solar rooftop mounted systems with commercial rooftop mounted systems. So they're two different things entirely, and it should be in the law. The law also should have a provision that gives preference over greenfield and, I mean, groundfield and grayfield sites over brand-new greenfield and other sites so that we're not taking up good farmland.
The law before us is solely about screening of roofs.
And again, the word screening is used when you want it to be screening. But you put in the word obscuring, and that's an obscure concept because all you have to do is put a flagpole up in front of it.
Right, we know that.
And that's obscured. That's why you chose it, because you didn't want anything.
We don't want screening.
Well, the people want more screening, and that's why it should be a moratorium on this and open up to the people. Let the people of this town look at this and decide what they want.
Well, here they are.
They're not here, they're here for this because this is being pushed through now. But there is not adequate due notice for this given.
We're not going to vote on this until next year.
All right, well, have some moratorium, have a moratorium, have some workshops, have, leave it open to the people. Why are you in a big rush?
Okay, first of all, I can't keep letting this go. We wrote the solar law two, three years ago. What was it, three years ago?
May 2017.
Okay, we wrote it two and a half years ago. We're not pushing this through. This is an amendment to a solar law because our zoning board of appeals found an inconsistency within the law that we didn't need. We always required ground-mounted solar to be screened. We never intended roof-mounted solar to be screened or obscured. To us, to this legislative body, a roof is a roof, whether it's got architectural shingles, whether it's a metal roof, or whether it's covered with solar. We are not jamming anything through. We have been trying to amend an inconsistency that was found by our zoning board of appeals. We believe that solar panels can go on roofs. How do you screen a roof? Do you put a billboard up to screen a roof?
A tree up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And what, and commercial solar and domestic solar look identical.
They're the same, the only the end uses... They're the same, the only the end uses, of course they do.
You can't have a roof big enough for a commercial solar.
We've restricted the size already. The size is restricted. We have already done that. So it's the end use, which no one ever sees, whether it goes to your personal house or sold to other homes, that doesn't change the way it looks. We have already restricted the size of solar arrays. We are not pushing through a law. There has been no ethical impropriety. We are not in cahoots with anybody. We are pro-solar and want to see solar on roofs and Rhinebeck. It's low-hanging fruit. We don't have very many brownfields. We've looked at our landfill. We can't do it because of the way that it's capped.
Well, Rhinebeck doesn't need specifically to have its own solar. There's plenty of other sites that are doing pro-community solar.
So, and another, so it's not our responsibility, it's Hyde Park responsibility, it's Red Hook. Everybody but us can do it.
But the thing is on this, on this particular project, the, the use of, I mean, farm buildings is one thing, but then you're making them into commercial buildings.
We're allowing it with our, this law, yes we are.
This isn't about Gummer Hollow. This is about the statue.
This is about everybody.
This is up now and this whole experience.
It's applicable to the whole town. It's not just about Gummer Hollow.
That's why the change was made, isn't it?
No!
That's ridiculous. We told you why the change was made, because there was a inconsistency with the law that we passed two and a half years ago.
How was it inconsistent?
Because the zoning board of appeals read the law in a way that they interpreted that we required roof-mounted solar to be screened and we never intended that.
That's because of Gummer Hollow.
No.
Okay.
That's just not fair.
Well, how did it come up? It's not for that project. What project did it come up for?
We, actually, I think it came up with the Wurtemberg Road when we realized the inconsistency.
That wasn't rooftop mounted.
No, it wasn't, but that's when we realized the inconsistency. I don't know.
Really?
But, let me tell you that this legislative body never, ever, ever intended for there to be screening or obscuring of roof-mounted solar, whether for personal use or commercial use. That's all we're trying to do.
And you intended that for, on a farm building, they can build a building anywhere they want because it's a farm and then they could put solar on it.
They can't build it wherever they want. The planning board still has site plan, special use permit and site, site plan review. It can't be built anywhere they want it. The planning board does have say. Whether or not you did that as a planning board member or your board did that is another thing.
When those buildings were presented, they were presented nearly as farm buildings, not solar mounted.
When you look at it, it's pretty obvious what it was for.
Oh, since I saw it was, but I didn't do that site.
But the planning board saw it.
All right. So you think because the way they were laid out, they shouldn't...
Well, anyway, it's water down, it's water over the dam, buddy.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, before you come back up, does anybody else who hasn't, hasn't spoken wish to speak about this?
Michael can speak with us.
C. Hudson's here, I don't know if you're going to comment or not.
I just want to address the...
I want to wait, we, we, we are going to take others. Look, it's C. Hudson. Audrey, come on up.
I'm happy to wait for you to speak.
Good evening, my name is Audrey Freyorkson. I am the land use and environmental advocacy attorney at C. Hudson. You all have given me PTSD.
Rule 100, I'm sorry.
So, as I understand it, there is a revised law now laid on your desks. So, the public hearing will be adjourned to January 2nd.
Held open.
Held open. And so the actual language, unless there's a few copies laying around, nobody has actually had a chance to see. But as I understand it, screening requirements for ground-mounted solar remain in place and as the supervisor has said, screening for rooftop is not required except in certain situations when there's the potential for immediate damage. So, I am the principal author of the Clean Energy Green Communities Site Guide to Renewable Energy. I have been working in this sphere for about the last three years and I've been at C. Hudson for five. Before that, I was a municipal and land use attorney for 10 years. So I've sat through a lot of meetings and feel this has engulfed me for a second. When I was a baby lawyer many, many years ago, one of the first assignments I got sent out to was to represent a developer who wanted to build a truck stop. And needless to say, it was a really difficult and emotional issue for the people of the town. And it seems that many years later, these kinds of emotional issues still come to the fore. In this case, it's with regard to renewable energy. Couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago, I was at Montgomery Place, one of the historic buildings here in our area, one of the important pieces of our landscape, both to our county, our towns and America. And I spoke to Baker Book Bar students, 20 years old, young people, mostly on the Greta Thunberg sign of things, and you know who that is. And I was speaking about how C. Hudson has gotten involved in a few proposals for, in this case, ground-mounted solar that were in the view sheds of some of our important historic resources like Olana, Thomas Cole House, the Locust Grove Estate. And we got involved and we worked with the developer, we worked with the town planning board and changes were made to those proposals to mitigate or eliminate their legal impacts. And, you know, we, we were having this discussion of how we can integrate renewable energy into our historic landscapes. And one of the students looked at me and was basically like, "The world is burning, climate change is happening, why are we messing around and wasting our time with this?" And I said, "Because of the importance of those historic resources." And I think you've heard from a lot of people tonight that that kind of integration solution finding can happen. I haven't read the law. That, of course, is all for you and your residents to decide, but I think the town board has really moved forward towards trying to find a way to integrate those things. And so we commend the board in that regard. C. Hudson's point of view is from a regional basis. We really have a vision for the valley to be an example, leading the way towards renewable energy and doing it in a smart way. Responsible siting, design techniques, screening only when needed and appropriate, but otherwise really trying to find ways to promote those renewable energy sources, so.
Before you go, can you speak to roof-mounted solar? Is there a position on that from C. Hudson?
Right, I think there was some confusion as the process has gone through. We had submitted a letter to the board on October 25th that was on an earlier version of the law, which I believe had screening requirements for rooftop solar, which since have been revised.
You were objecting to the law that required us to obscure roof-mounted solar.
Commercial roof.
Any.
Well, I mean, residential is a whole other issue in, in your code, but your code as a whole, actually, and I've now read a few of them, is a very forward-thinking code in that it sort of groups solar projects into accessory uses, principal uses, which in this case is mostly ground mount, but also allows for co-principal uses, meaning that you can have the principal use, whether it's a warehouse, a barn, a strip mall, not that you have many here, but to then put a second use on that in the form of a community solar project rather than putting it in a greenfield, which as you mentioned, you don't even have that many of. So the, the code itself is very forward, it's about solar, so to then step away from that and create a barrier by requiring screening of rooftop solar from wherever that happens, whether it's in Rhinebeck or anywhere else, from C. Hudson's regional perspective, we don't think that makes sense. But of course, your code actually in the site plan review requirements for commercials, I think you referred to them as solar power plants, does have a requirement that you can look at the visual impacts. I mean, it's built into the code, plus there's secret review and everything else. So, you know, a simple, flat-out default screening requirement for rooftop solar doesn't make sense, there's built-in visual assessment possibilities there in your review process. And then if an impact is demonstrated, then you consider whether or not the proposal is even appropriate or screening is required. So that's sort of our, you know, region-wide point of view. We really commend the board for how hard you're working on this and setting out your policy to promote solar while also recognizing the resources that you have in your backyard.
Thank you, Audrey. Hold on, Michael. No, no, this is the public hearing board, sorry. Before you speak, I, I want, I don't want, does anybody else want to address this? No, no, I don't want to do the, Nancy, Dave is next.
Dave Flupon, 340, Wurtemberg Road, had a comment on 92nd, so I can hand this in. That mostly has to do with the commercial solar interfacing residential. The last meeting, I was discussing the commercial solar installation. We're going in around New York State successfully. I think one of the issues that we had in most of the situation we've had so far is interface between commercial solar and residential in historic areas. I just want to point that out, that most of these complaints aren't blanket anti-solar and that we've, Rhinebeck has a rural residential character that makes it a difficult interface and that's what we're running against. And I'll do this very briefly, my friend, I believe that commercial solar screening in all forms for residential areas is obvious and critical and that the proposed amendment needs to distinguish between commercial and residential impact. For example, one zoning review group, not to make a mistake.
Group. It's an informal advisory group to the legislative board with no decision-making power.
Sure, great, okay. So the zoning review group, meaning it was pointed out that roof-mounted screening for business such as Williams would be less important than installations in residential zones. And we don't feel that that's been addressed in the, the, the proposal that's up right now. Secondly, these recent comments from Jeffrey Anzavino at Audrey Freyorkson of C. Hudson present an opinion that false screening or obscuring is not needed unless there is a demonstrated adverse aesthetic impact, which is difficult to define, I'm not sure how that's measured, but in our opinion, aesthetic impact is a matter of personal opinion and in this case is, is therefore defined by the residents who are impacted. Again, on a greater level, why does the law allow commercial solar plants in residential communities? The solar law allows commercial solar plants in 97% of Rhinebeck. We feel that's too broad. Other municipalities restrict solar power generating plants to industrial or non-residential areas. Obviously, Rhinebeck has a difficulty in that. And we appreciate the broad efforts of the ZRG, in this case, the group. And I haven't put it, but in particular, Jim Levy has been excellent. We've been to several of those meetings and we're very lucky to have him. We feel the efforts to loosen commercial solar screening requirements have not been serving the residents of Rhinebeck particularly in residential areas. And lastly, my wife and I would like to prepare her opinion, present it to the town board on March 27th and again on June 10th. The change to the solar law should wait until after the pending appeal of the existing solar lawsuit. So, and this, no, no Joan Goydian?
No, we have Joan Winnie. We won the lawsuit on Wurtemberg Road. It's been to the, it's going to the appellate division, which could take, it could be like a Dickensian novel, it could go on forever.
And it did say, it could be lost.
And I just want to say one thing. For us, we have limited the size of all solar. We don't allow mega arrays here. We were very mindful. So the size of arrays that we allow are so small that they're close to residential arrays. We've already considered that, I believe, because we have restricted the size.
I mean, the Wurtemberg Road would be 1,500 panels and 1,500s not residential.
Would be about two, an acre and three quarters on a 16-inch parcel.
But there are no one-inch residential roofs.
Nancy, did you... I'm Nancy Calvin, a town historian. I'm just glad to see that C. Hudson brought information about the law and responded to you. I'm wondering if the same was done with Shippo and the Dutchess County Planning.
Yes, not Shippo. We're not required to send it to Shippo. Dutchess County Planning, Dutchess County planning found it to be a matter of local concern, which means that they have no concerns.
Well, I would have been interested to know what Shippo had to say because that's a historic, national historic mystery for the town. And so that would give you a nomination that perhaps you could get some responses for the general meeting.
I'm sorry, Nancy, say that again?
Shippo, the state historic foundation.
Yeah, I know what Shippo is. I, I don't know that they weigh in on local laws for a whole area, but we could check.
Everyone is on the same page about being interested in preserving our community historic resources and at the same time making provisions for this energy.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Anybody? Jeff Irish.
My name's Jeff Irish. I'm a resident of the town of Rhinebeck and also the general manager for Sun Common in New York. And the founder of a company I started here in 2012 called Hudson Solar that designs and installs solar systems in the region. Earlier this year, New York State took the giant leap forward and signed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which is going to require that 100% of New York's electricity come from carbon-free sources by 2040. That's only 20 years from now. And that's a law. And not only that, but the electrification that's going to have to also occur as we move lots of fossil fuels for both heating and for transportation is going to dramatically increase the need for renewable resources even more. And the state's only seen two ways to do that. Large-scale wind offshore and upstate and solar. And in the Hudson Valley, we are not going to be able to build utility-scale solar farms that are, say, 100 acres in size because it's just not going to fit with this wonderful environment we have here. So we are going to need a lot of small solar systems and a lot of small community solar systems. And I think this, the modifications that will apply here are a wonderful improvement in the solar zoning law. For developers like us, it will lift a cloud that now could allow us to go to other rooftops in the town, commercial rooftops, agricultural rooftops, even large residential rooftops and start talking about community solar systems. Because community solar systems don't have to be any particular size other than being large enough to serve to a small extent of these 10 off acres. So there's a lot of opportunities, we need it. And the clarity that we will not have to screen rooftop solar systems, I think, will help us move forward with some other project opportunities. That's what we need.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address this? Sorry, Michael.
Jonathan Manchus, Wurtemberg Road. And I have been following this in the way that a lot of people apparently have been. I just do want to just make one basic point, though, that I, I agree with the underlying thing that a lot of the board members are saying, which is that the low-hanging fruit here is rooftop mounted solar. I mean, it's, it seems sort of like a nobody under me. And making it overly difficult for people to do that seems incredibly counterproductive to me. So the idea of not putting legislation in that ties people's hands is something that I definitely support.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't answered? Can you keep it very brief since this is your second time?
The only thing I'll respond to is this idea of there being some kind of secret channel or impropriety about all this. And I want to say I take it very personally when that happens. I probably, I, I pull... I probably, I go and talk to my elected representatives just like you do. I imagine that I'd probably visit with you guys less than Bob has, because I'm just...
I'm the answer.
Yeah, so I don't have some secret channel. What I have, I think, is an argument that makes more sense, and for that to be cast as some kind of secret, special permission, it's very insulting. So we're all talking here, we're all making an argument for how this should happen, how our town solar law should take place. I've been trying to do this for four years, since before the town solar law took place. I presented my proposal with the solar in the buildings together at first. It's never been a secret what I intended to do with those buildings. They serve agricultural and solar purposes. They always have been planned that way, we've always talked about them that way. There's been no secrets.
That's true.
I really, really resent being cast in that kind of light, simply because my arguments are more persuasive.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the board regarding the solar law? You can hold it open, then, Chancy, you want to discuss?
I just want to correct one factual matter, so that it's on the record. Mr. Donovanson commented that four or five months ago, when the zoning review group completed its deliberations and made a recommendation to the board, that it was unanimous. In fact, Elizabeth and I both abstained from that vote for the very reason that we are on the town board. I don't think it's terribly important, but I did want to correct it.
I'd just like to say again that we don't, we don't even need the zoning review group, we are the legislative board. We can take their advice, we cannot take their advice, we have our own minds, we are a very pro-renewable energy board. Complying with New York state mandate by 2040 isn't good enough for us, we'd like to do it sooner. We are aggressively committed to renewable energy on this town board. I think I speak for all of us, that's our top priority. This will be continued. Thank you all for speaking. Where do we go on now? Chris, how much time do you need, Chris Shale? Where are you? You know, I'm going to let, Jim Levy's going first. We have a presentation from Jim Levy, our town planner, our excellent town planner, thank you, Audrey, on recommendations, just bringing the town board up to date, where the zoning review group is with recommendations on short-term rentals. Again, we can take the zoning review group's advice, or we can reject it, but I want the town board to hear this.
This has been hard, wait till you see what it's going to push through. It doesn't look easy.
Oh, I need copies, thank you. Oh. I need little copies if anybody wants one.
This is the perfect site.
You put a bigger paper so you can see the pieces.
Anybody wants a matrix?
So, I really quickly just wanted to provide an update on what's going on with the group stands related to short-term rentals, and a lot of discussion about the group, because a lot of work is going on, and a lot of revisions we're considering. Obviously solar is one of the big ones, this is another one, short-term rentals. And essentially what's been going on is zoning review group has had significant discussion on the pros and cons of short-term rentals since earlier this year. I think we, at this point, as of the meeting last week, developed, I think it's a pretty good framework, the executive theory two by zoning review group members, as to how they want to move forward in terms of rules, regulations, and standards, further considerations at some point as a local law, again, it's also going to be formulated. We wanted to bring it to you just so you could, you know, see where we stand. Really quickly, this is a snippet, short-term rentals, so we'll be lasting 30 days, and then on long-term rentals, leases are a typical type of long-term rentals. The matrix that I have in front of you is essentially an outline of the elements in mind, including the local law, how it has to stand right now in our discussion, it's still ongoing discussion. And I just wanted to point out one statistic, just since I'm here, you know, in the public meetings tonight, and that is that Dutchess County just came out, if you didn't see it, the planning federation, yeah, the planning federation, came out, I was reading the most recent newsletter talking about short-term rentals, the home newsletter is focused on short-term rentals, and they actually identified that the town of Rhinebeck currently has 90 short-term rentals, which is the second highest number in Dutchess County.
I think 135.
And I think it's probably higher, yeah, exactly. So, you know, Rhinebeck is, town of Rhinebeck is...
Right on the beaten.
Right on the beaten, short-term rentals. So, this is currently, you know, ongoing in the town, and it's something we're looking at because, you know, it's out there, and we need to figure out how to regulate that. So really quickly, I just wanted to run through the matrix, just to explain where we currently stand, against this discussion of the zoning review group, and this is the current thinking. All right, I believe we have a general agreement, and then they're going to vote on it, but I think a general agreement is where we stand, and that's what the matrix kind of shows. So at the moment, we're talking about only allowing posted short-term rentals, which means the homeowner would have to be on premises at all times, a short-term rental would not happen to someone with not on the property, if there's that specific property, when that is taking place. We are currently looking at allowing short-term rentals for people to rent out their primary residence or the domicile, either a room in the house, the whole house, as long as they are staying, staying in accessory structure on the property, renting out that accessory structure on the property as long as they were staying in the house, some combination thereof. And one of the elements that's still not decided, that we are discussing, is if someone who didn't have a primary residence or domicile would be allowed to rent out their whole house, say, if they were to leave for a week or two, so...
Or a month or two.
Well, yeah, the rentals would have to be for less than 30 days, for short-term rentals. If it was more than 30 days, then it would be a long-term lease, that falls under a different category. But if they were to leave at certain times, depending on how that would be run, that would be an option. And we're still discussing that, we haven't settled on, thoughts on that one. What we're doing is we start putting this together, we've generally agreed that registration will be developed, registration form will be required, administration will be required, and information will probably be public on the website, that's also to be determined. We're going to define what hosted is, we are defining what each of these property types are, we'll have a purpose and intent statements, a fee schedule, fees for which, still have to be determined, we're working on those. We are going to require fire inspection to be done annually for each of these properties, and all parking must be off-street for your short-term rental. In addition, the perimeter criteria, and again, these are kind of where we stand at the moment, property owners want for the test of the water and wastewater systems to be good working order, safe for use, properties have to have a local property manager, which could be the homeowner, but such as someone who's on-site to take care of those problems. Now, because we're talking about a domicile, people having to be on-site, this should be an issue, however, if we do go to the point of allowing someone with a domicile to rent it when they're not there for a week or two, that would become an issue. So we want someone who's responsible for maintaining that property, should someone need. So that one is a little bit up in the air, depending on where we go with renting a whole house if the owner's out there. All owners will be required to provide current contact information, keep it up to date, we don't want any LLC or business information, we want individuals, so that if there is an issue, we know exactly who to contact, there won't be any issues in tracking someone down. We're requiring all garbage in place, and over-acceptables, overflow garbage, applications to be provided, just to make sure we don't have any issues there. No signage to be permitted for short-term rentals, you cannot advertise your house as a short-term rental out of the street or on the building. The owner also has to maintain information, card or binder for the reviewing of the other rentals. So everyone who comes in, have a binder telling them all the vital information, you know, number one, contact where to get out, things like that. And initially, because it's a short-term rental, this is not bed and breakfast or anything like that, there are no services to be provided. You come in, you rent a room, or you rent the house, whatever it may be, or the accessory structure, and that's a pure right, you don't have the services to provide while you're there. Last few, we are talking about, there's some questions related to this, about how we're going to do this. We are discussing whether or not to allow apartments or similar types, types of housing to be allowed to be used as a short-term rental, there's some concerns about subletting, and how that might play into this, we are still discussing. And then, you know, if we do have problems, we have to have a way of handling those. So at the moment, the zoning review group has recommended if a property has two violations within one year, their short-term rental registration will be revoked. In addition, if there are two code compliance issues, that would resolve and it would be revoked. And we're doing it separately because you could have a code issue that isn't necessarily related to the rental itself, and we want to make sure we cover all bases here with any potential issues that come up. Failure to keep up your contact information up to date would result in revoked registration, as we're all assuming, is just to make sure that we do have that primary contact information available. Finally, proof of insurance would be required of all people wishing to rent their house, use of an RV vehicle, I'm sorry, RV vehicle or other mobile structure on a property, it's not allowed to use as a short-term rental, and no one is allowed to sleep outdoors. Anything outdoor space is not permitted to be used.
No camping.
Correct. And then finally, which would probably be part of the card or binder that would be provided for people, when they come into the short-term rental, we're going to require them to see evacuation, so people don't know what to do. It's a lot of these, people renting houses, we assume are coming from out of town, so it's certainly not, I figure, we're going to be in these types of situations. So, it was a really good summary, kind of where we stand, just wanted to run through what we're going to do to understand.
We want to do this because we're the legislative body, and we want your input. We will be writing this law, and Chancy and I just wanted to make sure that the board was in agreement that we're probably not going to allow people to rent out their weekend homes, and the level of proof that we're going to come up with is going to be, you know, we're going to look at tax returns, we're going to look at where their kids go to school. It has to be your primary residence, it can't be a non-resident, apart, you know, it has to be your primary residence in order for you to be able to rent it out. That, we think, will stop a lot of the issues we're having with people buying, speculating, and turning rentals into un...
Airbnb.
What?
Airbnb.
Yeah, unregulated hotels, and that's where the problems are coming up. And we do have a good number of complaints of our residents really losing the quality of their life and the enjoyment of their home because of these Airbnbs. While we don't allow it now, because it's not in our use code, it's really difficult for us to enforce that. So we need a law so that we can enforce it. But I just, we want to know that you guys think this is the direction we should go in.
Questions in the box, and it's just, again, it's...
No, and I got to tell you, this is so helpful, it's so smart of you to do it, so you did still a ton of work into a very understandable document.
Can I say something? Fire inspections have got to be building design, too, right? That will be done, same with fire inspections. I don't know, is there a max or minimum number of parking spaces related to in town? Do we have a parking space requirement for development? That's something I'm...
Not for, not for a homeowner.
Right, there's nothing, as many cars as you want in a town. Essentially what we're going to require is the homeowner to certify that they have the number of parking spaces available for the number of people that come in.
I don't understand what you're asking, John.
Does the basic zoning code now for the town include a maximum limit of number of parking spots for a one-family house?
No, not that I, not that I know of, Warren, I don't think so.
So essentially, obviously, this is going to be the requirements that will be on the forms, and the registration form, and the criteria that are included on those forms, which you haven't developed yet, that's step two after we come to a agreement on what we want to see. And then people have to sign it, you know, and sign it to test that this is in fact what's there, and then the fire inspections and others will be done. Nice. Thank you.
Do you guys have thoughts on this general direction? You know, you can think about it, you don't have to, I don't mean to put, you need to digest it and give us your input at some point.
I just know from research and other places, the property manager's a default for a lot of situations, so that seems to be a lot of...
We want to take care of the problems that come in, but if the homeowner's on-site, then the homeowner technically should be responsible. That really comes into play, but again, we allow this, you know, as a time whatever issue for someone renting a house.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody have any questions for Jim or Tom?
I'm sure I'll be back as we get to the floor.
Thanks, Jim, and thanks for coming today.
There was some discussion as to, you had chimed in and said, oh, it would only be for if it was 30 days or more, and I think the question is not that any particular individual rental would be more greater than 30 days, but if somebody chooses to go away, right, so it's their primary residence, but they're on sabbatical, and they go away for four or five months, is there any kind of cap as to how many days in a year?
Isn't that, isn't that a rental? That's not a short-term rental.
No, but it could be rented, they're away for four or five months, but it's rented for a two-night weekend, three-day...
We haven't decided that yet? In order for it to be your residence, I believe you have to live there for over six months. So we don't want to create a law that we can't enforce, so if, I always use Chancy, and he says no way in heck his wife will let him do this, but if Chancy and Gina go away for four months, it's their primary residence, they live there, they can rent it out to short-term rentals, less than a, for six months, yeah, a short-term rental is anything less than 30 days or a month. He could rent it out month to month as long as he likes with a lease, but he can only do short-term rentals for less than six months, because if he did it for more, it wouldn't be his primary residence, and he would have to have a manager. But if somebody, Chelsea and Gina had an apartment in New York City, and they were living there full-time, this would not be their primary residence.
Next steps, there's another zoning review group discussion, December 15?
I think we need, we want to make sure that our board is comfortable with this, and we have to get, Ed is having a procedure tomorrow, so he can't be here, we want them to have time to digest it. I think the zoning review group is meeting in January, if we get board input before then via email, we'll go ahead and keep working on this.
Yeah, they're doing, kind of this set up on the 16th.
Or, I don't know that the zoning review group will keep doing this, we might take it over now and work with Jim, because we're the legislative body, and...
How can we find out in terms, I have the zoning review down for December 16 to 10, but how do I know?
For when, for the 15?
I think you mentioned the 16. It just didn't, no way.
Yes, that's right.
There's no agenda.
We do have it for December 16.
There's no agenda, you can always contact me, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do, we need input from the board.
Right, you can have them there, we'll review it. I will check in.
But any local law will be noticed, and we will have public hearings, because that's the way it works. You know, I reached out to a group of people to give input on this, because I knew that there were residents who weren't happy with rentals going on, there were, you know, bed and breakfast or in owners who wanted, and there were people who do this for a living. So we included all of these people at our zoning review group, and what the town board wants to do is allow this within reason, and so that it doesn't interrupt the quality of life for our residents.
And we'd like to continue to participate, so...
Sure.
Great, now please.
Thank you. Oh, Chris Shale, I'm so sorry, thank you for coming.
We usually have very difficult... I'm Chris Shale, and I'm here for Wells Manor, actually, the proposed purpose of Wells Manor, Wells Manor is a loan to housing facilities for elderly, which is in the village, it is locally district owned by, how we developed, some kind of, that special type is not for property corporation, that's now right at the hospital, the hospital is looked for developer, founded developer, that is a not-for-profit, they are also an Article 11, not-for-profit, special type of housing development company, that means they can only own and operate not-for-profit housing projects, that's what they're here for. So John is here to speak to, just quickly, to explain the policy to you, and the reason for the request of the board.
So, Wells Manor is not Section 8 housing?
It is.
It is Section 8.
Yeah.
What's the difference between Section 8 and low-income elderly housing?
It depends on the subsidy, so Section 8 is a federal contract with HUD where the tenants pay 30%.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, sorry, yes, my name's John Perico, work with Foundation Housing, we're a national nonprofit based in Rockville, Maryland, that focuses on preserving existing affordable housing throughout the country.
Sorry, the name of the company?
Foundation Housing.
Is this your project?
I run the acquisitions for our company, and this is one of the projects I've identified.
So you're, you're, you are the company that would be taking this over?
Correct.
And you are representing the company?
Correct.
Thank you.
So just a quick, two-nish spiel about my company. We were formed in 1990 by a gentleman named Marty Schwartzberg, who has a long history involved in affordable housing and developing the Section 8 program, way back when he worked at HUD in the late 60s, early 70s. He started the company as a... He started the company as a philanthropic legacy and almost as a white paper think-tank to advocate to DC, the congresspeople in DC about preserving affordable housing. We, as a company, changed our mission in 2007, 2008 during the financial downturn, where we started focusing on preserving affordable houses. To date, we own close to 100 properties throughout the country, over 11,000 units in 19 states and a district in Columbia. Our only mission is to go find these assets, get them in nonprofit hands such as ourselves, and making sure that they stay affordable for the foreseeable future.
How do you make money?
How do we make money? We leverage debt and equity through low-income housing tax credits and other different sources, which would earn us developer fees and cash flow from these properties, and then we use that money to reinvest and buy new communities.
Okay, so you do make money and you pay your CEO or everything?
No, we are federally regulated as a nonprofit. Our payment for our staff at our headquarters office is within line, within reason of a nonprofit-owned property.
Okay.
So the Duchess County Hospital, Northern Duchess County Hospital, found us through a marketing process and selected our group as the buyer for this property. As part of us buying the property, we're seeking to extend a half-contract right now.
Let's talk about what a half-contract is. That's housing assistance payment contract. And when this property was originally created, it was created with a long-term half-contract and also, excuse me, it was created with a long-term HUD mortgage, excuse me. Right? Back then, there were, there were different ways of financing these kinds of projects that are not available today. Now, in general, a lot of these projects rely on a combination of subsidies, including Section 8, the half-contract that he's talking about, and low-income housing tax credits, both of which together can make the project viable to offer to low-income tenants.
So, being selected, we are going into HUD for an extension of that Section 8 half-contract, and as part of it, we're also promising to do rehab to the property. Although it's in good condition for its age, it still needs upkeep. So our renovation runs the game of new roofs, new windows, new fascia where they have wood fascia, new kitchens, new bathrooms.
Painting, interior painting.
Interior painting, outlaying the whole property with Wi-Fi free to the tenants. We're also going to put in some additional services, parking lot and sidewalks will also fix up as well.
How many units are there?
There's 75.
And you're asking us for a total tax exemption?
Yes, the property currently benefits from 100% tax exemption, and we're asking for an assignment over to our new entity and an extension of that for our financing purposes.
For 40 years.
Right, and the original, while the original entity was also a housing development fund company, because they had a HUD mortgage, a direct HUD mortgage, that has a separate exemption, so they didn't need to come to the board for a specific exemption. So that's why we're here, because we're not going to have the same kind of financing. We're going to have probably Fannie Mae loan, Fannie Mae loan.
So that makes you not automatically entitled to-
Exactly.
Half.
Right, but, so we are here therefore to ask you for the Article 11 exemption, which we can get, but we need your approval for.
The Article 11 also includes ad-verarm taxes?
Right, ad-verarm taxes, not special assessments.
Do you guys have questions? Do all properties like this get totally exempted?
It's a municipality thing, so it varies from state to state. State of Illinois, as long as it is charitably owned, owned 100% by a nonprofit, they give a full exemption. State of California, very similar, North Carolina, South Carolina. New York doesn't have a state statute for that, but it comes out.
And I would say it depends on the project, but, you know, the thing about these projects is that, you know, a not-for-profit can get an exemption, but because these entities need to combine subsidy sources-
Yes, fine.
-when they do a limited partnership to create the ability to do tax credits, then you have a taxable entity which has a general partner, which is the not-for-profit. But because it has that, that type of entity, it doesn't automatically qualify.
Our concern was fire taxes, and especially if, within 40 years, we have to go to a professional fire department or a hybrid fire department, and that's the only thing we were thinking. Can you speak to that?
Well, right now, we're in the village, so the village fire department would be providing coverage. Obviously, you know, we know they probably have a contract for coverage within the town, but the units are within the village, so the village has responsibility at the moment for providing fire coverage. As you say, things could change over time, but-
Well, the village, yes, but all the residents pay for fire protection except tax-exempt residents, not for pro, you know, the-
It's part of the general village tax, actually, correct.
They don't have a mill rate for this, do you?
Well, we figured out one once. That's the mayor right there.
That's, that's the only, that's what we were wondering, should we exempt you from fire tax if we have to go to a paid fire department or a hybrid fire department?
So just speaking to that is, you know, today it's exempt, and that's what we've gone out to our lender with. If we are not able to maintain that tax exemption, our loan proceeds for the property are going to go down, and therefore, our rehab scope for the property for fixing this place up for these seniors is obviously going to go down as well. And at the end of the day, what we're looking for is just fixing up these units and maintaining a support facility for the foreseeable future.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments or concerns?
I'd be interested in what Gary has to say about it.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gary, mayor of Chicago, I'd like to run that. I had met with this group, had a joint meeting with HUD, which Elizabeth was invited, unfortunately couldn't make it at the time, and we discussed exactly what John has laid out here. In regard to taxes, the village, as they commented, we don't have a mill rate for fire tax or anything else. We're a general fund accounting system, so everybody pays into the tax, pays in the EBITDA, except for the 501(c)(3), just like in the town. I'm sure you have Texas Home, Firma, everybody else, all those others who do not pay for the fire taxes, right? They are granted for whatever amount of years that they have. So currently, you know, I don't know how we institute a tax, because we don't have a taxing assessment for us to do that. It would be a unique situation for us to create something like this, and I'd have to run it through legal to make sure that we could make sure that we could even do this and make it equitable tonight across the board.
Well, when you and I were talking about this from the point of view of the Fire Protection District, which the village covers part of the rest of the town, I took the fraction of your, of the town, of the village's budget that was allocated to the fire department, and took that fraction against your mill rate for the whole town, and it worked out to something like 35 cents per thousand for fire protection in the village, which I don't know what the assessed value would have been for the Wells Manor property. Does anybody know?
I think we looked at it, wasn't it 3 million or 4 million?
Yeah, so it's 35 cents per thousand is about what somebody did to that.
All right.
So, what was your point? The point is-
The point is that's, that's what-
Cars anymore?
If it was a commercial property, that's what they'd be paying for, for fire protection. I'm not advocating for that necessarily, I'm saying, are you okay with having the tax exemption continue from the point of view of fire protection?
So, we had already received a letter from the town, from your, from your lawyer Warren, asking us to vote on and approve a 100% tax exemption, which we did at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we've already, as a legislative body, agreed to 100% tax exemption.
So, I tell you, okay, where I'm at is if the village is okay with it, I'm fine with it, I mean, we're not going to lose anything.
No, it's not about, we didn't know what this new ownership structure was, now I understand it, it's a funding issue.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
No last name.
Are you going to be trying to add the revision tonight, or?
Are we under the gun on the 120-day requirement, or? You'll wave that in case you are-
Chris, we'll have it at our next meeting.
Probably do it at the next meeting without VRI.
Without work.
Just to clarify, I did not ask in the line-
December 9th, we'll have it on for our December 9th meeting, and I think-
I did reach out to the village and to the school district, I didn't ask the village to approve that, I asked-
There was no vote.
I asked the village to give us their report.
Yes, there wasn't a vote.
And they, and they did take a vote, so I just want to make that clear. I haven't heard from the school district, I'm assuming they have no objection to it. So if we're not under the 120-day requirement, we can do it at the next meeting, we'll just, and the board seems to be inclined to do this.
I think we're fine, we understand it. We don't know-
I don't feel like I know enough about this transaction, or, we're, we know very little. For example, I think to me while you were speaking, it might be interesting and helpful to us to see your own application. I mean, we don't know, at least I don't know what's going on here, Frank, and I'd like to know more about the transaction, and whether, for example, did I hear that you are asking for us now to provide a 40-year exemption?
So the, the property has been exempt for close to 40 years, it's going to be rolling over because that HUD mortgage is going to be expiring, that's one of the reasons they made a decision to try to move this into another not-for-profit, because the hospital would have had to go out and finance this, right, and they would have had to do what we're doing.
How much is the loan mortgage?
Pardon me?
How much is the loan mortgage?
I don't know, you know, that's the hospitals. But, you know, they would have had to do something, because the property needs some renovations, and they would have had to figure out where to go from here.
How much mortgage are you seeking?
It's between seven and a half to eight million, fund the acquisition of rehab of the property.
How much is the hospital charging you?
Uh, we are going to be open about the private exception.
What else would you want from the-
Chauncey's real estate attorney.
Discuss it further.
Your associate dean at peace.
Meeting with them, then good. You want to have a offline meeting with the representative, you can ask questions at evening.
Yeah, I mean, basically, what we're, I think the goal is that we want to keep the residents, you know, having the same situation as they've had all these years.
Yes, it's low, it's low-income affordable housing for older people in our village.
I guess what I'm saying is, I want to know what I'm voting for, and on the record, not just an oral presentation that'll be in hand.
But what, won't that be in the resolution that we pass?
I don't know, I don't know, I guess I'm asking that question. What kind of preparation will we have before December 19th?
Want to be work with Warren on this, with Wells Manor?
If you want on the meeting, I'm assuming you want guarantees, what happens in the, what are the guarantees that you will continue to provide the affordable housing?
So typically, what I see municipalities such as yourself do is eye the exemption to the affordability. If the affordability were to go away, exemption would go away, full assessment, full taxes. As part of our acquisition, we're renewing the half-contract for 20 years, which is the maximum allowable under HUD statute, so once we have that on the day of closing, that property will at a minimum stay affordable for 20 more years. Within our hands, it's not going to change, and we do not sell properties. So, you know, adding that additional layer within the resolution for another 20 years makes sure that this community stays affordable for its residents.
So, to come back to my question, are you asking us to pass a resolution that provides this exemption for an extended period of time, 20 years or 40 years, I think I read about 40?
40.
40, okay.
Yes.
Now, there's a doctrine, which I'll bet you're familiar, that one legislative body can't tie the hands of its successors. Now, I imagine there's an answer to that, but I don't know what it is in this, in this country.
It's pilot in a sense.
You're authorized to, under statute, to grant an exemption of this term, I think one handle term.
Yeah, the statute would preempt that. Well, these are the kinds of questions, I mean, forgive me for not knowing all about this, but I don't. And in order to vote, I need to know what I'm voting for, so, so help me, educate me, I'll make myself available.
Sure.
And I imagine the others feel the same way, but I'm speaking just for me.
I'm a little bit more comfortable with this because I work with the assessing department and I'm familiar with pilots, while this isn't a pilot, I understand-
Certainly, pilots, but-
The half structure, and this is tied into your funding, I understand that, yeah. And I know what the previous, what the current structure is, so I, now I understand, because you can't get the kind of funding that there was before, and you have to go to Fannie Mae, I think you said.
Fannie Mae is the, I think, the plan to-
Yes.
Guaranteeor, is how it works, so. Are there any other questions you have now, or you want to-
Well, the only question I have is, you provided us with a proposed resolution, if you could add that language, some proposed language to your resolution about keeping, keeping the-
The final two together.
Let me take a look at that, and then, so that, we would probably want to sure have that in the final resolution. If you want to meet with, with them, you know, between now and the next meeting, we could set up a meeting here.
I would feel more comfortable, I would feel as though I'm moving toward a new standard of voting for. How do the rest of you feel about it?
I'm fine with it, I, I know that affordable housing and Section 8 housing needs to be tax-exempt in order for it to exist for people that need it. I understand now that this was a mechanism of the financing that they needed to put together, so.
I accept that. But, for example, somebody asked the question, how do we know they'll keep it at a nonprofit level?
Well, I think that has to be in our resolution, in order for them to have the exemption, it has to be-
Then my point is, what else are we having yet for?
Requirement of your loans that you have to maintain the affordability. So, maybe these are the things we could work out.
Yeah, we just need assurance that it will stay as Section 8 housing.
I think the simplest way, and other municipalities have done the same thing, is actually add language in there that as long as it stays, you know, affordable to moderate income individuals of a certain age-
Low, yeah, low income.
-that, that exemption stays in place, and if you don't follow through with the covenants, then, you know, the property's up for reassessment.
Because this is currently, look, it's not moderate income, this is low income.
Yeah, it's low income, yes.
So I, yeah.
It's 30% AMI targeting.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Take your time.
Okay, Warren, the thing that we kept you here for-
What did you keep you here for? It's been so long that I-
Thanks, Gary, thanks for coming.
Yeah, we have a couple of things.
Amtrak, everybody.
So I have for you, we have resolved our disagreement-
We got to get Warren out of here.
...at the county, and I have a settlement agreement for you to copy that have already been signed by Amtrak, and I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, if you could sign this and get this on to Amtrak's attorney, Mr. Ford, on providing you-
I will make a motion, one's a red line, guys, it's the same thing. I'm going to make a motion to accept this settlement agreement and allow me, the supervisor, to sign this when Warren has it in the final form.
We'll have the final form.
Which it is, okay.
Second. So I'm giving you two copies, and if you could just make sure that somebody gets that on to Mr. Ford with a copy to me along the way.
I guess that somebody would be Joan.
That would have to be that somebody.
Okay, so-
And we have one other agreement that we still have to finalize, and that's with the county, but I, we're not anticipating we're going to have any problems.
Will that be on our next agenda?
Hopefully, Mr. Ford is going to be working with the county to finalize that.
Any other questions or comments, all in favor, aye, any opposed, so move, I'm signing.
And one, I have one other matter that I gave to you just for the record, that we, we did, I did prepare an intermunicipal agreement, I'm sorry, a agreement for professional services for LaBerge Engineering in conjunction-
You signed that today?
You signed that today.
Done, I was approved to sign it at the last meeting.
Right, just make sure we made a couple of weeks to it.
Yes, I already talked to Joan about that.
And we have an intermunicipal agreement with the village, so this has to get out of the-
We already signed that today.
Is the village going to sign?
The village signed it today.
They did, oh, you're ahead of me. Good.
Good.
Just send me a copy of fully executed.
We will send you a copy of fully executed.
And that's all I have.
Well, Warren, have a good, have a good trip. Well, Warren, have a good, have a good trip.
Yeah, I'll miss you guys, for sure.
Okay, so I know Suzanne is here to talk.
I am.
And Mickey, poor Mickey.
This is resolution.
Last survivor.
Resolution, I'll make a motion, or I'd like a motion for resolution 2019-256, tab 8, policy for crediting exchange of natural burial plots for conventional burial plots. Is it only one thing, Suzanne?
I knew there was a pet thing. Are we not, we're kind of taking that round.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Suzanne, thanks. You can, it's on the floor, you can speak quickly.
Yeah, when we opened up the natural burial ground in 2014, we passed a resolution that said for people who had plots or conventional plots could exchange their plots if they wanted to for natural burial plots. You know, they just had to pay the extra fee. But we didn't do the reverse at the time because no one owned a natural burial plot. So now, this is really in because we changed the vault requirement. There are a few people who want to buy plots in the conventional section that bought plots in the natural burial ground because they have family in that area. So.
They've changed their mind.
They changed their mind because it's, because then we're not requiring vaults. And so that's just enough for some people. So the problem, of course, is that the natural burial plots cost more than the conventional plots. So we have to beef on that, the difference. I know, I know it.
What does Shelley say about this?
At the time, because he wrote the resolution, he'll, he'll be charged with, like, a D fee. So it'll be $150 to make it to the D. We already have that on the P schedule. So it's $300, it's 12.
National, I'm sorry.
It's $300 difference between the.
2,000, 2,300.
It's 1250 and 1650 for natural burial. So it's, uh, 400, sorry, 400 dollars. So it'll be, yeah, minus 150.
I'm fine with people changing their, their final resting price. Anybody else? Josh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. You could have explained this to me when you were in today.
Could have.
All right.
We would have missed all the fun. Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, let's go back to our normal, hold on.
Oh, let's have a town board.
Hi, Joe.
Now, we're all.
John keeps telling me how short they are.
This is the, this is the line. The solar, the Rushed Solar Power. I'm sorry, everybody. Okay, I will make a motion for resolution 2019-249 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? Does anybody have any questions? This is end of year clearing up. We're, we're over in some lines, under in others, and we transfer it around. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2019-250, preliminary account payable abstracts, 72 checks totaling $106,000, $137.61. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2019-251 for two capital projects, capital project checks, totaling $38,960.77. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. This is just Tyler and stamp fulfillment for tax season. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-252, I need a motion. I'll make it because I'm the liaison. And may I have a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Chauncey. The assessor is asking us to approve valuation of apartment condominiums as part of the ongoing 12-hour mandatory training as well as preparing for a town-wide reassessment, which is timely because that's what we're doing. I don't remember approving this before. Why are we now?
It didn't make it on the agenda in time so that you came to you separately and said, can I go?
Thank you, okay. It's asking for, yes, he's already done all of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and approved? So moved. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2019-253 for the Columbia Green Society for the Protection of Cruelty Animals 2020 contract. Motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Josh. This is the yearly contract we have that we usually deal at our reord meeting.
And they are contracted here and they start in December.
Thank you, Joe. They start in December, so we have to approve it now.
So let's do it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. I need a motion for resolution 2019-254 appointing Jim Levy in planning for places as our town planner.
One move.
I'm sorry, who motioned this?
Josh.
Josh, who's the second?
I'm the second.
Okay. Again, I think, you know, he. We're approving him now for next year.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-255, New York Power Authority Energy Services Projects Use Questionnaire for LED Street Lighting Project. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Thanks. Any discussion on this?
I'll just let you know that this comes up now because the project is finally starting to move. And I will probably be able to come to the December 9th meeting with the new total sum, project summary, and maybe find a, a little progress.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. We did tab 8, we're on tab 9. No. Resolution 2019-257, confirming permanent zoning regulator. I will make that motion. May I have a second? Thank you. I just want to say that Michelle took the test and is number one on the list. So we knew she was qualified when we hired her and she proved us right. She's doing an amazing job. So happy to appoint her. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-258, a request for proposal, an RFP, for the purchase of a new zero-turn ride-on mower for the maintenance department. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is from Ed, I saw.
Yeah. It's going up for RFP. We did, we did put it in our budget. So he's going out for RFP that will be bought, I assume, next year. We're budgeting for it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-259, amendment and extension of the IMA with Dutchess County for central purchasing services. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? So moved. Let me just say, I know there are some other things that I have to talk to you about. David Carr and Amtrak Agreement. We did this. Oh, Charles Burnbaum from the Cultural Landscape Foundation is champing at the bit to do an online What's Out There guide of Reinbeck and the Mid Hudson Valley region. It's $86,000 to build this component of the website. They are asking us to come in with the first money of $25,000 so it can be called Reinbeck and the Mid Hudson Valley. And it will highlight all of the historic cultural landscapes in this area. And I think we're defining the area from Alana down to Hyde Park. There's a 16-mile historic view shed area that goes from Clermont to Hyde Park. There are about 14 that we've found in Reinbeck just off the top of our head sites that would be promoted. And it would be things such as Burger Hill, Wilderstein, the Thompson Nazarela Park, the, all the cemeteries, the cemetery in the village, the cemetery by Stone Church, the cemetery by the Palatine. All of, all of our poet's walk, all of the senior Hudson. And if you go online and look at this, it's just an amazing resource. They talk about the pedigree of the sites, the design, and it's an interactive map. For us, if we decide to do this, and we're not deciding tonight, I'm giving it to you and I want you to go online and the people at home to go online and look at the Cultural Foundation, Landscape Foundation website and see what they do, it would be for us part of helping to fund tourism because people, you know, our main, our main economy driver here besides the hospital is tourism. And it would put our name literally on the map. And we would also be standing for the preservation of cultural landscapes. We would, I would also be raising money with several people from our Historic Preservation Committee in conjunction with Cultural Landscape Foundation to come up with the balance, hoping that the county would go in with us and some of the other historic sites. But I urge you all to look at this and consider it and we can maybe look at it in the new year.
Do you have a website that we should have?
Yes. It's called tclf.org, the Cultural Landscape Foundation.org.
T C L S.
Yeah, no, F. If you just Google.
Charles Burnbaum.
If you just Google the Cultural Landscape Foundation, Charles Burnbaum's non-for-profit in Washington DC, you'll see what this is about and go to the different tours that they have.
They've built them for other places.
Yeah, the Newport County, which Newport funded all on its own, the town in Newport. There's some for like San Antonio, you know, the, the wine country in California. Yeah, they have a whole bunch of them. I mean, we could go on.
Would it make sense? Can you get some of the other towns to come in with?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I've committed as an individual to helping raise funds. And I would go to the county, to Thompson, you know, to Dyson, to the other towns, to historic places to build the 86,000, which isn't, even the village of Reinbeck. But, you know, we would get marquee on this. So part of this would be for economic, the support of our businesses here is why we would do it as well as sort of signaling to everybody that we know this is important. So take a look at it.
What was the amount of one of the towns?
$25,000. That would enable them to start the first stage of compiling all of the landscapes that would be in this.
Is it, is it a year-long process? Or I'm just curious.
Yes, about a year. And, you know, Charles will be up here again and he could make a presentation to us. A year to a year and a half. They have to research everything. And I'll send out the information to you. They have to have everything photographed. They do that in the spring. They have a whole process for this.
There'd be some kind of long-term pursuit to which you would agree to make this formation and they would agree to do it.
I just said to him, I would talk to you about it tonight at the town board meeting, that there was no way we were going to fund this whole thing because it wasn't all about Reinbeck. But we realized its importance. I would talk to you. And for being first money, could we get the naming rights of Reinbeck and the Mid Hudson Valley region? And he said, all doable. So, I mean, I would want it to be Reinbeck and the Mid Hudson.
And this would all be publicly accessible.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, people.
It's app-based, you know? It's like you're going somewhere, looking down.
Go, go look at it right now. People go cuckoo for this. They go on these tours. Like it brings tens of thousands of people to a region to go and look at these places.
People for our short-term rentals.
People for our, people for our short-term rentals, exactly. And our solar power. All comes together. Anything else that we're forgetting? If we are. Did you guys want to go into executive session to discuss specific county committee appointments? Or do you want to wait? I'll send you guys out, like, out what we have since it's sort of specific people is protected by.
That's important.
Yeah. Executive session. So I will make a motion to. Any other discussion, questions, comments, announcements?
I had a meeting at the Gardens and I have to update an ed about their public trail.
This is, Josh is on the trail committee and he's working with.
So I'm new to this and I have to confirm with Ed what the next steps are. They have an agenda. I need to get back to them.
Yeah, we don't know what the next steps are. This is the group of citizens that are looking to do walking trails from the Gardens for Reincliffe into the Village and the Gardens to Astor into the Village.
So there's a chunk of money that's dedicated to the budget for a feasibility study.
Okay, let's not say chunk of money. There's some money.
There's $25,000.
Towards this, whether we hire someone to work with us.
So they will be looking for information back from us about what their next steps are.
Yeah. And there's money from the state for trails. There's a lot of money from the state in 2020.
Right, and they're worried that they may miss this tap fund deadline, so.
Well, I better head going.
So that's my, that's on my to-do list.
Thanks, Josh. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Okay, thanks, everybody. Good night.